Under God, and the visible of liberty and justice for all.
Calling this meeting Westbrook City Council to order, roll call, please.
Waterman?
Here.
Crowner?
Here.
Christie?
Here.
Hightmeyer?
Here.
Please?
Here.
Need to perfect and approve the agenda.
We'll move.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda.
Motion to approve is presented.
Support.
Motion with support to approve consent agenda, items one through six, which are amendments from regular city council meeting on October 7th, 2020, payment to collision center, payment to dual security, payment to Jim Jolly sales, payment to Iowa Department of Natural Resources, and approved the claims list as presented in the amount of $200,180.61. Any discussion?
I'd just like to thank Leslie for sending the claims list in a new format. It was a lot easier to track all the expenses. And I think last time I had five or six questions for Dan, and this time I didn't have any, so it's a lot better. Thanks.
I just had a question on that Amazon Prime membership I sent over. I know, Dan, you mentioned that we only had one account, but it still looks like we're paying $500 total, so I'm just confused about that.
It was actually more than $500, the business account, I think.
I think it was $500.
Is it $500? I think it-
Right around.
That's what our account fee for a business account, so we can do it. The reason it's higher is because we can do net 30, and we could, so we don't have to put it on credit cards. So it's easier for Leslie and them to track, because otherwise if it's on a credit card, it's really hard to... So with the business account and it's net 30, it's a lot easier for the accounting to follow the expenses, because it comes up by vendor instead of all on a credit card.
Okay, any other questions?
Oh, and I too just want to thank Leslie for finding this new programming. I like it.
I do like it.
Lengthier, but accurate. Yep.
Okay, roll call.
Christie?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carried. I did want to make a comment. I hope everybody read the 900-plus pages of this agenda. All right, staff reports. Dan?
I have a few things. I had a question about the sign ordinance, and I guess it wasn't clear on the work session, what we all decided. So I know we were, I know we decided that we were gonna allow fin signs, but did we decide how many? I remember hearing one if you, unless you ran a corner, then you got two. Is that what everyone kind of decided? I know that was brought up, but I don't know if we ever had a consensus on exactly what we were doing there.
I thought we did. Do we? I thought we did.
I don't know. I wasn't here, so I don't know what you guys talked about. And Brad cut me off when we went to the work session.
No.
I didn't get to see that.
I guess my understanding was that you were gonna go back to another Iowa city that allowed fin signs, and see if they were in the temporary or in the permanent, and bring us back language on that.
That was my next question on whether we decided whether they're temporary or permanent, because I think... And I think we talked about different places on the lot, too, or maybe not in, just not in the right way, so I wasn't clear on what all...
I think we said not in the right way.
I think, for sure, not in the right way.
Right.
But it was also mentioned that maybe there would be some other setback instead of, on top of that, but I didn't, I wasn't real clear on what we decided on that. And then I know Andy was, you were gonna bring something back about the flashing sign and decide what you wanted to do with that, so I'm not sure where we left it. I don't know if we need to talk about it some more again, or, I mean, I can do some research and pull some, and pull some stuff, but...
Well, on the flashing sign, all I asked for was to clarify that one sentence, so it was clear that all flashing lights were not able to be had in the city, not just red and green, or red and blue, sorry. And then we had talked about a specific business, which would be a conversation, but it has nothing to do with clearing up that line of code.
Okay. Well, I'll bring some, I'll bring something back on the agenda for discussion, probably not the actual ordinance to change it, but discussion, an actual discussion where we can vote on it, so we know where we're coming out of the, where we're coming out of the discussion, or we know what, where everybody stands on it.
Okay.
And then, secondly, I just received my second engine, speed and engineering study quote today. These are, are fairly reasonable, because we're collecting the data, so it's cheaper, but I'll have that to you. And we're actually collecting data on Agency Street right now. So at some point, at some point after two, after maybe three weeks, we'll move that, we'll move that sign out on Mount Pleasant Street and collect three weeks of data out there. And if we send the accident traffic data, then the engineer just has to put it together, and it's a, it's quite, it significantly lasts. The data collection was the biggest part of that expense, so. But I'll bring, I'll bring both of those quotes to the next meeting, and you can approve or not approve that once you get it, and that's all I have.
Well, can you move that sign that's on Broadway up Mount Pleasant Street?
That one doesn't collect any data.
Uh-uh. But maybe that sign needs to be moved, because on the east side, you've just come from that stop sign on Long Meadow, so you really don't have enough speed by the time you get to that stop.
There's just limited places where we can put those signs because of the distance, and we'd have to put a bunch of posts in, but, you know, we gotta work with what we have in the right way right now for our signposts.
Your post on the other side of the street, no?
About the same, um, not as many, because on that side of the street is where all the no parking signs are, so that's why I posted it there.
Maybe you can take it down just a little bit further to the next no parking sign?
Okay.
Well, Kathy talked to me before the meeting, and somebody suggested putting it up on Van Wees, so if there's a place over there, we can move it over there, too, I don't...
Well, I have a thought.
Move it around.
By the high school, 400 West.
Twenty-one hour zone, because we have to have it reprogrammed.
Oh, someone just asked me if you could do it, so.
Danny?
I forgot that wasn't programmed for 25.
You just said you were leaving the sign up for three weeks. Why was I thinking it was, the study was three days, is what the engineering firm told me?
I was just going by the quote that Snyder gave me, that that engineer was doing three weeks. We don't have to.
Oh, okay.
We don't have to. That, that's all I was going by, is that was how, how that engineer was gonna collect data, was over three weeks.
Okay. For some reason, I thought it was only three days each, but okay. You're fine.
Yeah, there wasn't, there wasn't any science behind that, except for I read what the, what the engineer's quote said, and I decided to use that number.
Okay, that, I thought I did the same thing. That's where I thought I got the three days, but maybe I misread it.
Anything else for Dan? Mike?
I'd like to let you know that the pool is done, it's all painted.
You like Andy here.
Pool looks nice.
Just was gonna say, they finished painting the pool Friday, so the slides are all painted and the play structure is all done. That's all the thing I have.
They find any issues going through the stuff, did they, or?
Any what?
Any issues to fix going through all the stuff?
No, no. I was concerned on some of the pipes. They were looking rusty, but no, they blasted it all off and treated it and painted it, and it looks good.
Yeah, it looks nice.
Anybody have anything for Mike?
Mike, I just wanted to say, number one, on Houston, they're doing a great job on the, on the sidewalks, getting those put together and doing it in this not-so-great weather, so that's good, that's continuing. And number two, I showed, I think, 14 houses today all over the county, and I just wanted to say, when we crossed into West Burlington, I showed a few West Burlington houses. The people immediately brought up how great the town looked, so thank you very much.
Hey.
Thank you, Mike.
Jess?
Um, starting October 1st, we're able to go do our tobacco buys that we do every year throughout the city. So we'll go around to the retailers and making sure that they're all doing what they're supposed to be doing. Um, as of last year, they changed the law. It's legal for anybody under the age of 21 to purchase, so I can use anybody up to 21 this year, instead of the 16, 17-year-olds that we used in the past. So I'm looking at doing, finding a little older person to use as a-
I mean, they bumped it to 21.
21, yeah, to purchase.
Because it was 18.
Huh?
It was 18.
It was 18. Last year, legislation changed it to 21 years to purchase. Tyler's in step two, doing great for FTO, and we finished off last year's governor's tra, uh, governor's traffic safety grant, and we'll be starting a new one here in November for this coming fiscal year, so we'll get a, we'll be out doing more OWI enforcement projects like we did last year. That's all I have.
Anybody have anything for Jesse?
Jess, just one thing. On the camera sign up you talked about last time, I've had a couple people mention that, and they've had trouble finding it on the website, so I wondered if we could get with Brad about the registration and see if we can make it a little easier to find.
Yep, I will talk to him tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any, thanks, Jess.
Oh, Andy, I just checked. I think it is three days and not three weeks, so.
Okay, thank you.
Sean, anything going on?
On the building side, I went out to Menards, the new storage building earlier this week, did welding inspections. You should start seeing some roof coming up pretty soon. Getting the roof decks, believe their contract schedule has them putting concrete down near the end of the month, first week or two of November. I just about said December. That's the way this year's going. Well, thanks, 2020. Gonna start going around, checking to see what did actually not get picked up with the fall cleanup, and what Levine's didn't pick up, and get after those property owners as soon as I get a few things squared away. This week is, there's a bid letting due at the end of the week, so I'm busy with engineers and contractors, getting them quotes on, or not quotes, but estimated permit prices for their projects, so they can get their proper bidding in. On the fire side, Monday night, we went out to the training site, did some training with the new building, had burns on two floors. Guys did really great. It's starting to show that that, having that facility is improving their skills greatly. They're gonna be going up, five of them, to Yarmouth next weekend, to some joint training being put on by Yarmouth Fire Department, being taught by Rogue Instruction. That is free for us. It's not gonna cost a dime, so they'll go up there for two days and do some, do some training, so get them a little bit more hands-on, expose them to a little more than just what we have, so it, it actually broadens your skills. And then, Monday night after training, we found the pump on Engine Two. We had a valve that's not working properly. I've already gotten a price on that. It's about $300, if it's just the butterfly valve. I'll take care of it. Not quite an expert on it, but I've done a few of them in the past, so.
Any questions for Sean? Hey, thanks. Katie, you got anything going on?
Yeah.
Leslie? Uh-oh, she's got a mic.
I don't have Paul up there. We're working with the, been working with auditors and targeting the next council meeting for accepting the audit report. Been working on the annual financial report, annual TIF report. Dan and I were talking, we're monitoring today about, we're gonna have to do amendments to the TIF plan for Mount Pleasant Street, and I can hear Abbey Red Projects, and we're gonna start that second meeting in November.
Questions? All right, thanks. Kathy, anything going on?
I just wanted to remind people about the Neighbor Helping Neighbors program. If anybody needs any help with their leaves or snow removal, or also anyone that would like to volunteer to help someone, please get ahold of either me or go to the website. There's a place there where you can sign up.
Andy, you got anything?
Uh, no, I'll talk about it later.
Rose?
Nope.
Reese?
No, I'm good.
Al?
Good.
Okay. Anyone wishing to address the council or matters are not on the agenda tonight. We'll go to public hearing. We have three of them. We'll open the first one, which is, council will hold a public hearing on plan specifications, formal contract, and estimated cost of construction for Des Moines County landfill lift station project. And that involves installing a lift station at Des Moines County Regional Landfill, and extending 12,000 feet of four-inch plastic sanitary sewer force main along 137th Avenue, Washington Road, and West Mount Pleasant Street. The project includes installation of cleanouts, air release valves, side restoration, and other miscellaneous items required to complete the work. The estimated cost is $910,000. Katie, we receive any written comments?
No.
Anyone wishing to make a public comment from the public? Counsel wishing to make comment? I'll close that public hearing then. Second public hearing is on the proposed plan specification and formal contract and estimated cost of construction for the Mount Pleasant Street water tower booster station project. And that involves 500,000 gallon composite style water tower booster station, existing facility decommissioning, and approximately 620 square yards of paving, 4,470 litre feet of water main, 910 litre feet of storm sewer, and 590 litre feet of sanitary force main. And that project is in the amount of $4,760,000. We receive any public written comments on that, Katie?
No.
Anyone wishing to make a comment from the public? Counsel wishing to make comments? I will close that public hearing. Lindsay's here, if anybody has any questions on that. We can address them when we get to the, under the, under new business. The third public hearing is, I'll open that, is on a proposed plan to dispose of real property located at 310 West Burnham Avenue to Southeast Iowa Housing, Inc., to facilitate development of a single-family home. The purpose of conveying ownership to Southeast Iowa Housing, Inc., is to satisfy the city's in-kind contribution required by the Iowa Economic Development Authority for a workforce housing tax credit grant that was awarded Southeast Iowa Housing, Inc., to support the construction of one new single-family home in the city of West Burlington. Did we receive any-
No.
-written comment? Anyone wishing to make a comment from the public? Counsel comments? I'll close the public hearing. We'll go to new business. I am number one. This is to consider resolution approving the planned specs, formal contract, and estimated cost of construction for a Des Moines County landfill lift station.
Motion approved.
Okay.
Support.
There's a motion with support. Any discussion? In your packet, you had all the plans and specs to look at if you had the chance to do that. Lindsay, you want any comments on that? Straightforward. I will make a comment. All of this will be reimbursed to the city from the landfill commission. Roll call.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Motion carried. I am number two, is to consider resolution approving the planned specification, formal contract, and estimated cost of construction for the Mount Pleasant Street water tower and booster station project.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Ken, Lindsay, you got any comments? Roll call.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carried. I am number three, is to consider resolution disposing a real property located at 310 West Burnham Avenue, more particularly described as Lot 55 and 62, and rural subdivision by conveying ownership to Southeast Iowa Housing, Inc.
So move.
Port.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
I do have a question. In the part that says developer retains full support from the city to complete the project, I just wondered what that meant.
Well, I think we support the project.
Just moral support?
No, we're not, we're deeding over to the land.
Okay.
That, that's, that takes care of the, to meet the tax credits.
I just wanted to be sure what retains full support meant.
I think we ought to support anything that's gonna be a new buil, uh, house, or construction on a, on an empty lot that's gonna bring in tax dollars eventually.
Well, I know that, but I was wondering if we were, had any more money involved or anything. That's what I wanted to know.
That's the extent of the financial contribution.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Motion carried. Mike, thanks for being here, in case anybody had any questions.
Ken Ryan. Ryan's over there, too. Thank you.
Oh, I didn't see you, Ryan. You're in, you're in hiding there. I have number four, is consider second reading ordinance creating new chapter in the city code titled Work Zones. Let's see where, uh, the, uh, get to this thing. I hate this new program.
Is this what our attorney wrote up?
Yeah, the city attorney basically wrote the most stringent ordinance he could, uh, under Iowa code, he thought. So this is as far as we can go under home rule, and he suggested that we adopt this.
Motion approved.
Port.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
My only comment is, I wish that first paragraph included, I wish that language was a little tighter on what was exactly considered a work zone and what wasn't. I wish there was some way to delineate that, so that was a little more clear. Still very much in favor of this. I just wish it was the way, because the way this, you know, traffic control amenities, well, exactly how, you know, does any traffic control then tell someone that they should be able to get a fine for this? You know, does any speed sign? I just wish that was a little more clear that it has to be marked a certain way. I think this is fine, especially if the lawyer wrote it up. That's, that's just my personal thought, is I wish that was a little more clear to the motorists where that fine started and stopped.
Well, I think it talks about being under, under repair or reconstruction, so I think it's, we have to actually be out there working on it, I believe, before that would kick in. But that's the way it is in a lot of places.
I don't have a perfect answer for you. I was just reading through it. I think the rest sounds good. That just, I would think somebody might have a decent argument against it, the way it's worded, but hey, we pay the lawyer to do his job, so, okay.
Well, we got one more reading on this, Andy, so maybe Dan can get ahold of Pat and see if he can add another sentence in there.
I'll see what he can-
As we can-
Or even if, if he's saying, you know, I pulled this from this city, and it's been held up already in court this time, something like that, um, I don't, it just, it's odd to me the way it reads, and I'm one that likes to argue things, so I think I could argue this about 10 different ways, but.
Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Motion carried. I am number five, is to consider resolution adding Mark Bell to the fire department.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Christie?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Can I ask Sean, how many does that bring to our?
Well, it was at 23. However, all of our Natalie Rezigny here, of course, the other year beginning of 2021, because he was actually going to move down to Arkansas and be closer to family. And then, with Gunnar Hopper taking a conditional lock, his department will be eventually leaving us. And I just got news today, one of our other firefighters was doing a conditional lock for the St. Louis Fire Department. However, apparently out of the others that Justin put bankrupt checks on, so kind of a break-even thing. But this little tape's up and out of there on that 23, you know.
Lose three, gain three. We ruled it, right?
Yep.
That's what I thought. I am number six, is considered option for adding additional sidewalks to Houston Street resurfacing project. And from seeing the memo that Dan sent out, there's about seven different options, and which ones does everybody like the best? The option, the option that isn't on there is what I would probably prefer, and that is to add this into next year's budget. I mean, I've heard from several over the last year that if it isn't budgeted, we shouldn't be doing it, so I think we can budget it. And either way, it doesn't matter to me if a contractor does it, or if our public works people do it, but we ought to just think about budgeting for it.
Well, I asked Mike if our guys could do it, and he said yes. And Dan figured up the cost, and he said it'd be about $1,500 for the materials for each one, as opposed to $3,400 and $3,200 each.
That's the corner ramps, is that right? Okay.
With the ADA compliance.
That's priced now.
Yeah.
If we run an issue with COVID and getting stuff in, that may be a great sell, too.
And how about, Mike, there was some concern about, let's talk west side of Melville, matching the grade there, having the city do it on those driveways. That was a concern at one point in time. Do you think the city workers can do that?
Yeah, that expense is gonna be, I don't remember what that cost was, but yeah, after a year of driving.
Okay, which on here would be $16,400. Do you think we're gonna be in that range, or?
Yeah, if you have to be there, maybe.
Okay. Okay. Well, I know I'm the one that brought this up, and it's because I want that west side of Melville completed, but I, I'm also the one that usually argues to budget things. So if we can get it done for about the same cost, if we're not saving a bunch of money by already having these people in here, then I'm perfectly okay with waiting. That was my only thought, was, hey, we're already in here doing all these sidewalks. It's probably cheaper to have it done now, but if that's not true, then I'm for- then I'm for pushing it off.
Could that pretty much say what Andy's made of, uh, any of you guys, if there's something else you see, I'm not seeing that you like. But times coming up, so now it's time to bring that forward, so we are, we're gonna give it.
Yeah.
What's everybody think?
Sounds like an item for next year's budget.
I'm all for budgeting it for next year.
Yeah.
I heard three.
Well, we've gone this long without sidewalks. What's, what's one more budget year?
Well, keep, keep everybody from having shovel snow this winter. One more year. Okay, we'll talk about during budget season then. And speaking of that, I think we might start a little earlier. Is that right, Dan?
Yeah, we talked about maybe something maybe early December, uh, we can rainstorm out and we'll have to figure out how much time to set aside and when we wanna do it.
I'm number seven is to consider the purchase of a telephone system for City Hall, which Brad's got a memo written for you, all the good stuff.
Forty, Tom. All righty, this was something we had budgeted, I don't know how many years in a row, so Dan told me to stop putting it in the budget cause we kept kicking it down the road because, uh, the phone system wasn't breaking and, uh, so basically I got this option to where they would pay, it's, you could see in the memo, I forget how much it was per phone, uh, to, uh, purchase the equipment. And I figure we would move it into the cloud, so we would have a consistent budget and we don't have to come up with, uh, twenty-four thousand dollars was the last quote we got to do our phone systems here at City Hall. I looked into doing several other options through the years. We tried, uh, Free PBX, uh, I tried three different open source vendors. Two of the open source vendors stopped being open source and went closed source and ended up selling licensing after that. The only one that's still open source is Free PBX. But I think with the, uh, new COVID situation, it would be nice to be able to remotely hook those up anywhere and be able to use the phones anywhere when we're re- working remotely if we have to quarantine. So we could still, uh, perform city business and that stuff. And moving it to the cloud, then we also have, before we had to pay a maintenance fee every year on top of the Avea system for, we got three different quotes for that system. We had access systems. I'm trying to think who were the other two. One was CDWG and then I don't remember the third one. But, uh, yeah, it came out to the cheapest solution was the twenty-five grand and then we had to pay a service fee. This is all built into the per line. I think, uh, talking numbers with, uh, Angie, it came out to, how much more were we gonna pay per month? It was two.
Two thirty-one, twenty-one?
Two thirty-one, twenty-one, yep. And so looking at that, to come up with that twenty-four thousand dollars, you know, it'd take over ten years to come up to that system price, so to me, it just made sense moving that to the cloud. Um, if you look, I also put a backup solution in there, uh, just in case our internet goes that out, so we have a second internet option because now with the public safety on Verizon, the public safety plan we went to, they now allow us to have admit or unlimited at City Hall for the thirty-nine bucks a month. And so before they wanted to charge us per gigabyte. So, and you know, that, that could have added up for us real quick, which is why I never wanted to do that. We could also then reduce our lines down. Every person would have a dedicated phone number to their phone as well as their extension number, so we can call, uh, directly to that phone. You can give that number out or we can give the extension out. And nobody should ever get a busy signal because every phone has the ability to accept up to four calls at once. It has four channels. So what, what made us start looking into this is we wanted caller ID on the old phone system and I went to purchase the board for it and found out we couldn't get parts for it, that it was end of life. And then that's what started this, cause as soon as we have stuff start breaking on the system, we can't replace it but with used parts. We have our programming phones, which is Katie's phone up front and Stacia's. The LCD screens are starting to go out on them and then that, that's what made us start looking this year. Cause we have to kinda, you know, position it just correct to get it to work.
My screen's been out for years.
Yeah.
And I can't even tell.
Yep, Katie, you have to slap yours, right, sometimes to get the screen to come back on, so, I mean.
The other problem we've been having recently is we're, we're, we are using Lisco for, uh, long distance provider and right now we have no long distance. People can't call in.
Yeah.
Call out and Lisco can't figure out what's wrong with it.
They say.
They've been trying to fix it for months now and they haven't been able to fix it, so this will solve that problem as well.
Yeah, it's been hit or miss for two years on people with long distance calling us, but at least we could call out anytime. But now nobody can call out or call in that is on long distance. And then that's the issue we're having. Uh, last I checked with them, they're still trying to find the routing issue. And that's where we're at with Lisco on that, but that would do away with Lisco and we would go completely, uh, digital. So we have what's called SIP trunks. It's, it's digital. It comes over the internet now instead of, uh, through the fiber, which is why I've got that backup solution on there.
You lost me on IPVX and PBX or whatever.
I'm sorry, uh.
Don't, don't explain.
I had sent in some questions about the, the contract on this and Dan, you had emailed me back that there is no agreement and we can cancel it anytime. But I guess, what I'm asking really is, obviously this monthly payment's gotta be locked in there somewhere.
Yeah, the, the monthly payment's locked in through the state of Iowa under, I sent you an email. It's through the NSSO or something like that agreement that they do with Iowa. And so basically Iowa puts out a bid to all of them and then they say, we're gonna give it to you at this price, you know.
Okay, so that is locked in and, and how long is that locked in for?
Uh, he said for, basically we would be grandfathered in if they decide to raise the price, is what he told me.
Okay, so forever as long as we keep the system?
As long as we keep the system. Plus, we used to pay long distance fees.
Right.
This will do away with that. No long distance fees anymore.
So how much are we, I see it's also gonna, you're gonna be able to hook the fire station and
Yeah.
street shop into this. What are we paying for those right now? Isn't that extra?
For all of them, it came out to three hundred and.
Yeah, but does that include the fire station in there?
Yeah, that includes it. We're gonna keep.
That's what I wanted to know.
We are gonna keep the, uh, hard line going into the fire station, so we have a backup hard line, uh, just in case something were to happen, but.
There, there's two up there now, isn't there? Three?
Uh, there's two lines plus the fax line.
Yeah, there's three lines there now.
Yeah, we're, we're buy, we're doing away with the fax up there now because they don't use it, so we're gonna go ahead and drop that off as well. Uh, same with the street department's fax, uh, we were told they don't use that anymore, cause they used to get the one call, no digs, but I guess they do it, uh, through email now. Oh, well, we can keep that up. It's only twenty bucks a month. But, yeah. So you wanna keep that? Okay, she can't just email it to you?
You gotta print it off.
Yeah, not.
No, email it and then you can print it out anywhere, get it on your phone or, or I could even install that printer, cause we're dark fiber together and she can just go file, print and print it straight to that printer instead of faxing. And then that would do away with the monthly fee.
It is a little more challenging though, just simply because I, if I send it to the street shop, any one of those employees can get it. Or if I email it, it's individual.
Well, I can actually make it so you can just go file, print and then print straight to that printer down at the street shop.
Oh, okay, that'd work.
So. Cause we're, we're all interconnected and so, yeah, we, I can connect it to any printer.
Brad, have you tried one of these phones?
I have not. Um, if, before we do this, if you'd like, I can try it. I don't see why it wouldn't work, but, uh, we have professional installation free with it. I've, I'm pretty familiar with, uh, working with the SIP protocols and stuff and I know what, what I need to forward through and, you know, we definitely have a good enough, uh, internet for it and it's, we get HD voice, so I mean, it should sound crystal clear. And it is Verizon, so.
And you've went over features with staff and, you know?
Yes. Uh, the only feature that we would be losing, but will be getting in the future is right now we can pick up the phone and page the whole building through the phone system. We would lose that, they said, for about six months. They're working on that feature right now and it would be free when it comes to us. So.
Which might be used once every month, maybe?
Yeah, I, I'm the only one pretty much, I think, that uses it when I reset a server or something.
And Leslie, this money's still sitting out there somewhere. There's twenty-five thousand dollars earmarked?
Well, we did this five years ago, so it's still.
Okay.
Yeah, but we won't be spending near twenty-five thousand, so thank goodness, cause I thought that was a huge number at the time when I got the quotes.
So the initial cost then, the way I get it is five eighty-four a month.
Yep.
And then it's forty-nine, uh, four ninety-eight, ninety-five, a one-time fee and then twenty-six, forty-nine, ninety-five for the setup.
Yes.
They're giving us.
Yeah. And then as you could see, I got you guys for in here, the conference phone. It, it has wireless mics, so you can put them around, so whoever you're talking to can hear you. Um, that, that's on the, the one for you guys in here and you'll have a regular phone for back in there into your room.
It's a pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motionless support, any further discussion? Roll call.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Feitmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, Brad, you got one more here, don't you?
Yeah.
I'm number eight is to consider purchase of license plate camera for the yard waste sign and that is for twenty-two, sixty-nine, ninety. Now, is that?
That is.
That doesn't include that thousand dollars, does it?
No, it does. Uh, the camera comes to twelve something. It, it, it's on the CDW thing there. We've been having problems getting license plates through the cameras and I talked to one of their experts at CDWG and he says that, yeah, you have the resolution to do it, but you don't have the pixel density. And so I guess we need to get something with a higher pixel density that can get nice, sharp numbers there to see it off of. Like I said, I don't know how much yard waste is being dumped there that's from out of town, so I really can't do an ROI figure for you guys on this. Uh, right now I have, we used to have it patrol back and forth between the two stalls to get our numbers, but it always seemed to work out that they would dump and get out before the camera would move back to get the, uh, license plate. And so Mike asked if I would put in another camera and so I actually got an, uh, expert on the phone and talked to him about what I would need, so that way this time we would get something that would give us the license plate number guaranteed.
My major concern on this is it feels like with the building of the water tower that we just approved, that this is going away at least until this council decides to build it somewhere else. Well, it's at least temporarily gonna go away, right?
Only a portion that may be moved.
Okay.
I think we discussed that we'd use part of that.
We'd use part of that and then possibly there's three bins that go in the water shop.
Okay.
Timing this contract, yeah, whoever really lets us know where there's safety net is and how far, there's maybe only one wall that may be moved.
Okay, so that's still an option then, keeping that out there.
Does this camera cover both?
It will cover, yeah, it's supposed to be able to cover both stalls. Uh, it's supposed to be able to read. It has zoom in capabilities to go up to a, a football field away, so we know we've got that and then the, the pixel density is enough that they said we should be able to get the license plates now.
Then what do you do, like, I sold my truck, so now I use my brother-in-law's truck every time I take stuff out there and he's not a West Burlington resident. I go borrow his truck, bring it over, pick up my sticks and leaves and take him out there. So then you run his license plate and find him? How's that work?
No. Camera will pick you up.
Yeah, it should be you there with him dumping it.
Yeah.
And we should be able to see that you're clearly with them. When we run him, we'll see it's a Burlington and then when he gets contacted, he should say, I'm with such and such or I mowed for such and such and that, then we should be able to, but I have a picture on my phone. I wasn't able to follow him, cause I had other stuff to do. He came over from Illinois, got off on Curran Street and I had to get off on Roosevelt and this was on a Sunday. I don't know where he was going, but it was full of, uh, did you dump any pine last week? It was full of pine.
So I'm wondering, I, um, okay, so we've, we've got the camera installed and it's picking up the license plates and so forth. When do we check these or?
Uh, usually when Mike notices a lot more abnormal brush than we usually get, we go through and check.
So it's not like a continual thing and I asked Jesse too, what's the process? What do we go through in order to do something about somebody that we actually do catch? And of course, it's a kind of a, a long process.
And then it's up to the judge on whether he even prosecutes it or, or whether he even makes judgment for us. So I mean, there, there's no guarantee that this camera will earn its money back. So.
Just what? So the problem really is that they'll be picking, it'll be picking up all this information, but until someone requests for someone else to check it out, then somebody has to sit, it's, it seems like it's going to be a time taker.
Yeah, that's, that's why, it's cause they request to me and then I go through and look and then I pull off what plates I can and then I usually give it to Jesse. He runs it and and we go from there. But like I said, right now it's a guess on what the plate is because it's, it, their pixel density isn't there to give us nice, sharp.
Well, right now, um, anyone can take leaves and grass to the landfill free. Anybody can. And that's just another short drive down the road.
Yeah.
For anybody. So really, it would be the brush that we'd be concerned about.
Yeah.
But, um, I don't know if it's worth all the hassle we go through to have people to have, first of all, have everyone put their brush out there and then if we have to go through this, spending our time trying to track down people that are illegally doing it, I'm just wondering if it's even worth our time having it.
Yeah, I mean, when it first came out, we looked at the gate system, you know, where we give all the citizens a card, but that was unreal expensive.
Well, I mean, whether it's even worth
Yeah.
having the, the brush removal to begin with.
Oh, gotcha.
And just discussing this and maybe it hits the paper, a nice article. It might help to become a deterrent for some of them. If they read it and say, oh, they're gonna put up a camera that's gonna catch me when I'm going out here, maybe it'll start, start having less of that happening out there. I know I've sent two nasty letters to people that, uh, that weren't West Burlington residents, but I don't know if it stopped them from coming back cause I just happened to be out there and I knew that they didn't live in West Burlington, so.
Like I said, I saw that twenty-five hundred HD pulling a full trailer of pine over the bridge on a Sunday when I was coming home from my camping spot and he got off on Curran. And he got off on Curran and the landfill isn't open on Sundays, so.
Well, I, I think we still need to do something. And I know about progressive fines or violation and increase the, the amount because that's there specifically for, for us.
Yes.
We pay our taxes to do that. We pay our public works to do it. And I would, I would like to see a camera and, you know, do we have such a thing for violations for out there?
Yeah, we tightened that up a little bit when that one got dismissed a few years ago. When the, when the prosecutor and the defense attorney got together at the Y and decided that they were going to use the nineteen fifty-five definition of what a landscaper was. And they threw the case out after they subpoenaed me and it made me sit down at the courthouse for half a day. And then they dismissed the case anyway. And the officer that was involved in that was very frustrated by that whole situation. But we've tightened it up some since then.
Maybe our attorney can look at that again and put squeeze.
It depends what, on the, uh, which judge you get. I mean, and how egregious it is, I'm guessing that, you know, I don't know.
You're charging for trespassing, don't you, Jess?
We do trespassing more possibly literally. That's what, uh, well, recycling center toward the people that dump stuff out there illegally.
And they do it quite often. They, they got the camera system going day and night over there.
And I mean, this camera does have the capability. I just didn't ask for the pricing on it for a different firmware that we can load on it that will actually email us a list of all the license plate numbers. But you know how expensive that probably is, which is why I didn't even ask, so.
Mike, a, a year ago, you had mentioned a program which may or may not exist that picks up, actually goes to the person's house and picks up bags. And, and I don't know if you said tree limbs back then or not. I was trying not to publicly announce it.
It's during the burn season on Mondays.
Well, I need to have that information. I think the citizens need to have that information because I've had three calls just for the neighbor, helping neighbors that need to have their leaves picked up because they don't have trucks. So if we have a service.
It may be in that newsletter.
Pardon me?
I think I put it in that newsletter.
Okay, every Monday?
During the burn season.
Oh, okay. I must have missed that.
We've done that for years.
My, my question was going to be, you know, let's say this site up here didn't exist anymore, um, which I am in favor of. I think, I think it's a great thing for our citizens of West Burlington, but I also don't want other people using it. But if, if that didn't exist, would it be less work to actually go around? If, if a lot of citizens were taking advantage of the Monday pickups, would that be a lot more work for you than picking them up out there? Okay. Okay. Okay, so no tree limbs, those kind of things.
Over the years, Andy, we've looked at vacuum systems and all kinds of things. Where, you know, they just rake their leaves, not onto the street, but right onto the curb. And you go down and, but that takes two people around and they're just cost prohibitive. So what's your pleasure with this? I, I think the camera system should be put out there myself.
I make motion to approve it.
Support.
Motionless support. Any further discussion?
I, you know, I personally think we should probably have a broader discussion about what we're going to do out there before we approve another expense on it. See where we're going with the middle of this change before we go ahead and, and spend that amount of money.
Well, I think when we did that questionnaire how many years ago, that that was a positive comment on our survey that we sent out.
What was positive?
The having the drop-off site.
Yeah, like, that was, it's very popular with citizens, that's for sure.
We'll call.
Waterman?
Aye.
Connor?
Nay.
Christie?
No.
Heitmeyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number nine is to consider a resolution.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you, Brad.
Get the resolution up here. Is consider a resolution amending the Resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-three regarding the CARES Act. And that was, we were notified by the state that we needed to have this additional sentence in that resolution to be eligible to receive the sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Motion to approve?
Support.
Motionless support. Any discussion? We'll call.
Connor?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Heitmeyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Motion carried. Anybody having a little business? Anyone wishing to address the council matters we did discuss or didn't discuss tonight? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Being's adjourned, thank you.